Hello, Darryl. Hello, Darryl.
Hello, Mother. Hello, Father.
Normally switching back and forth.
How's that? Is that good?
Yeah.
There we go. That's too much.
I've got the.
That's a copa. I mean, what's your karaoke song? That's not mine. You know, mine is my brick house.
That's a good sing along.
I love that song. Show my age. All right, let's go ahead and and get started with our work session. We are going to start with a an agenda review. We're going to be adding one item twenty four dash oh four six, which is a mower purchase thing. They've been trying to get that together for a couple of weeks and they were having some issues with the vendor that they got sorted out. Okay, I think this morning, so. It's something that we need that just didn't get on the agenda before this morning. Then we've got minutes of the special call meeting, which was the budget meeting and the regular council meeting. I don't know if people have time to look at the minutes, but if you have any changes or suggestions, be ready for that. Don't have any proclamations today. We'll have our normal staff reports and then we've got a couple of public hearings. First one is an annexation request. Mike, you want to talk about that?
Yes, I do. This is a proposed annexation of. Sorry, twenty three point four acres in Coeita County. On. Probably eyes on Price Road. It's two separate lots currently zoned RC in Coeita County. It touches the city at the county line, just a little bit west of Sardis Road, where Sardis Road extends from Chat Hills down into into Coeita County. And the use on the property is just single family residential. In theory, in the long term, they could build a couple of houses. The current owner doesn't plan on building more, but in time we would probably expect to see a house on each lot. And but it's not proposed for any. Hamlet development or anything more significant than what we have in RL throughout the rest of the city. So the zoning would be RL, the voting district would be District Five, the. The map, the comprehensive plan map district would be rural residential and agricultural. And I believe the applicant. Don't see the applicant here. I expect they'll be here tonight, but this is a public hearing on on the was the annexation.
And twenty, how many acres?
Twenty three point four.
Yeah, so I mean, it wouldn't be available for hamlets owning anyway, ever, because there's not a hamlet close to it.
Correct, correct. Not less. That's right. That's right.
Anybody have any questions about that? Any discussion?
Well, yeah, I so last time I I can I I'm assuming I can be heard here. Last time I had asked about this and I was think I I was thinking about since the first reading. The the answer for which is, you know, which I asked in the abstract, not with any specific attention of Mr. Slagel, but the idea that. You know, why would we annex a piece of land? And the and the answer I got was, well, we get tax revenue and and then it was kind of put out that that. Well, we don't have to provide services. I had asked about the provision of services because it. You have to leave the city and go around to get to it and so on, and this would present problems and so, you know, logistical issues for police and fire and so on. And it was put on that. Well, well, it's some other some other municipalities problem. We'll just lay it off on the neighbors. That is, that is what was said in effect. And I mean, you shake your head, but and I'm not. I'm just saying what was said in here was specifically, well, Cowie will take care of it because he's paying Cowie to taxes. And and so I was thinking about that because I think one of the things that that's important to remember is is a city is. Not constituted to collect taxes, but to provide services and and. In as much as that is the case. We have to be prepared in perpetuity to provide services to all of our properties, right? That's what we do as a city. And so. We can't just sort of make the facile claim that it costs us nothing because we're leaving it off on the neighbors. That's no city should behave that way anyways, you know, we we have reciprocity, but that's reciprocity, not. Putting our responsibilities off on others. Also, Chattahoochee Hills has plenty of land, as is often noted, and so. The the reason to acquire land, I would assume, should be undertaken by the city in the interest of the public good. And I'm not sure that we've outlined what public good is being served. And again, I'm not picking on Mr. Slagel's application here. I'm just I'm just. Suggesting that that doing it just because or doing it, you know, for for. Some tax money, it doesn't doesn't seem to me to rise to to the occasion. So why do this? I mean, certainly that that, you know, I would say easily doubles Mr. Slagel's investment and provides him an opportunity to. Even perhaps sell off one of those lots and and recoup his money and build a house or whatever it is he plans to do. I also read in the in the discussion that was included from the zoning board. One of the arguments that was raised was the idea that it provides some kind of buffer, but that's. Silly, because of course then the buffer that then who buffers that, you know, it's just an endless expansion, not argument, so that doesn't really hold. And and so. Thinking about all those things, you know, and the idea that we're, you know, we're we're not a business, we're not here to. Help people make money. We're here to provide services to citizens and so on. One of the questions is still, I think, open. What is? Why are we doing this? Why? What what? What is the expectation around the provision of services without saying we're leaving it to the neighbors? And if we're gonna also, if anybody's, if we're gonna vote for this, is there any way to to? Condition because that that property will then be in the city in perpetuity. Which makes it a city responsibility in perpetuity and I didn't, you know, that's. An implication that we need to visit or discuss, I would think. I don't know. I don't know how to condition these things.
I don't understand that question.
And and let's let's address, let's address the specific issues too, just to to be clear. About the responsibilities, because I agree, it comes with responsibilities from the city for sure. One of the things when we're talking about, you know, what we're what we're paying for or not would be, for example, the thing that costs us. A lot right now, one of our means that we don't meet. Thoroughly enough yet in the city is roads. So to the point, right, these are roads that are in Coeita County, they're not all roads. So that's one thing that we don't have to take on as a cost, right?
How is that? I mean, just. It's an it's an item, but we're talking about pennies because it's a one, it's supposedly one guy going to a house, right?
Well, I I get it, but I'm what I'm saying is all the roads that go there, I'm talking about the actual provision of services to get to his house and all that, right? He brought those issues up. I'm just going to go through the list of three things that are the main services we provide. That aren't like planning services and things like that.
I see, I see.
And so one of them is roads. We don't pick up any expense on the roads. One of them is is fire and with the way that our agreements work, you know, there he's a mile from the fire station in Coeita, so. His his provision of fire safety is not going to cause us expense that's additional. Police would, I mean, we would probably go there for a policing, although again, you know, the way we work with Coeita County, they would probably show up first, just like Palmetto sometimes shows up first in our city and we show up sometimes first in theirs.
But so we are responding.
I would think we would be responding, yeah. But again, you know, if you think about what our police actually do. The number of responses that they have per house per year is incredibly low. And we won't be running radar on Tommy Lee Cook. We won't be, you know, the the kind of services they actually spent a lot of their time doing, we wouldn't be doing in those places. Tax benefit is just what it is, you know, there there would be getting some taxes in that we wouldn't be spending on things like roads and all of that, so there's some small benefit to the city there. And and I guess there's a. Philosophical question around, you know, if people want to be a part of what you're doing, do you want to take them or not? Kind of do the math on the cost benefit on that. And and that's where my head is around that. The the buffering thing, to your point, right, the second you increase your land space. To protect what happens next to your existing residents. You have a new resident and now you have that potential going beyond. I'm not going to argue that, but that's a fact. I do feel like, you know, the the commitment that we made back in two thousand seven, two thousand and eight was to. The citizens of what was the city then and adding stuff beyond that. That creates benefits of whatever sort, you know, when when Sarah does an annexation, it's both buffering existing residents and bringing in. Tax base that that's significant. This one is buffering some stuff without a whole lot of significant tax benefit. Tax benefit, but not significant, but no significant expense either. And they want to be a part of this whole thing we're doing, and I I don't know, I feel personally, and then I'm just giving my personal opinion now, that. On the basis of no harm, some benefit and. Yeah, come be a part of our party. I don't know. I I it feels like it feels okay.
So so I get so I get that, but it had me thinking kind of in the and obviously I don't know, Mr. Slagel, I don't have any interest in this at all, but the. But just thinking about it in the abstract, you know, the first question you start to ask then is, well. Geez, why don't we all go buy property on the edges of Chattahoochee Hills and petition to be let in and be part of that party?
Cool.
And. I mean, you you say you say cool, but that's a pretty facile, easy like, yeah, oh, cool, except cool, except Greg's got a job and Chief Tegu, we've got. We have, we have. Responsibilities and I I as, you know, relative newcomer to all of this. It's like I can feel the shape of what I don't know and I want to know more because there's probably a lot of people lurking around out there going, cool. Precedent set, let's all get in on the party and I don't know that I think that's a great idea.
The the precedent, I would say, that's being said is that we thoughtfully look at these things based on the cost benefit of each one, right? And so if, for example, some traditional suburb in development down on Tommy Lee Cook wanted to join the city, we would probably. Say that that doesn't make sense because the cost benefit, we'll talk about that a little bit if we have time today, just about the cost development of cost benefit of different development styles, right? You know, we look at each one on its own merits. If somebody wanted to come in with a couple hundred acres, it was adjacent and it was in a place that was reachable, right, like off of. Campbell and Redwine or whatever, that might be a cost benefit that we'd look at and say, yes, of course. You know, I I think you look at each one on its own merits and that's the way, frankly, that precedent works in this environment that we're working in anyway. The fact that you've done a thing doesn't mean that somebody else with a similar situation somewhere else gets the thing too, because there is no situation that's identical. And we're just looking at them each on their merits, right? And again, people may have different opinions on the merits that that I'm not arguing. But but that's how we do this, generally speaking.
So hypothetically, if Mr. Slagel, we we vote to annex this. And his neighbor to the south says, I want to be part of the party and gives a petition next month. What do we do?
We look at it on its merits and if that person.
Same merits, more buffer, right?
I mean, if that person is coming in with twenty acres of land, right, that can't be subdivided and that can't have. Kind of development that we don't like on them, right? I mean, the reality is in Coeita County right now, that could have three acre lots right up next to us, right? And so homeowners that are buying land in Chattahoochee Hills with the expectation that they've got a farm ed or whatever, and they've got open farmland next to them. Might end up with three acre lots behind them, traditional development right behind them. And what we're doing right now is protecting some of our residents from that by bringing somebody else who wants the same thing that we want. And if the person to the south of him has twenty acres and wants to do the same thing, then yeah, but I would argue that that might make sense too. Especially if they don't have public roads and all of that that we would need to maintain. But again, you'd have to look at actual lots and actual circumstances to make that decision, right? It is a case by case. And and again, we may not all agree on on the pluses or minuses, but you know, let's be. Let's be to your point, not facile about what they are or aren't. Let's look at the actual map and what the the things are and make an informed decision.
So what's that math is what I'm asking, like you come right that we come back to that. What's what's?
The map is we don't have to maintain the roads. Fire is basically taken care of. And, you know, my guess is, and I don't know this, but my guess is. Because he's friends with the people that own the Sardis subdivision, that basically he is becoming a part of that subdivision. From the south, right? And that's probably the access to his property eventually, and that's really the value for him to this, right? That's why he would want to increase his taxes, be a part of that, because he gets the benefit of that value. And for us. There's no real additional cost other than if he has a police call. And we might get there after the Coeita Sheriff's Department, but but we would probably go, right? And and again, how often does that happen? It's never happened to me, you know, it's not a common thing like a lot of the other. And the road that I drive on has to get paid, you know what I mean? And so for me, that's those those are the math points for that one. And then you can look at what the tax base would be. And again, value goes up when it comes to Chattahoochee Hills, we know that because land values are higher here. And, you know, that that's the other side of the equation. Those are the only ones I can think of.
Okay, is that where he plans on winding up as a part of Sardis?
I I don't.
I can't hear you.
Is that where he plans on winding up as a part of Sardis? He's attached to it. Well, I mean, I get what Scott says, you know, when you do things like that, you automatically, you know, you're doubling up. It's it's like you're almost playing a banker. There's really no reason to take him in. But by taking him in is his value doubles and then you have to wonder who you're going to do business with, is he going to join another hamlet, whatever, just depends on. I didn't say he could, but you just said he could join the whole Sardis thing, which is a huge complex.
Apartments, yeah. And he's basically.
So that sounds like what we're doing is him a favor. We're playing banker for him. We let you come in, W money, be a part of this, do whatever.
I like taxes on that forever.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to expanding the boundary a little bit. I mean, it's not, to me, that's a benefit. And the things, the time I've seen these, I've read about these going south is when people are cramming in. Adding a lot of kids into school systems and we not, we don't have to support that.
And I agree with you. I have no problem expanding. I just don't know. I just trying to find out. What is the real reason? I think that's what we're all trying to get us the real reason. Why would you want to go from Calwe to the full automatically W taxes? What what do you do? What's your plan?
And he's going to be paying more taxes. What do we do? He's paying more taxes. This is not me to second guess him. I kind of assume the best. He sees what we're doing. He likes it in a way. I I I get the point. There's never going to be a buffer because you have to buffer the buffer.
Right.
But there is a buffer in a way because Cowie can do something. They got going down Tommy Lee Cook. There's a lot of subdivisions and you could put three acre lots. So there is a buffer because our zoning creates that buffer. So we do. It's if if I lived against someone that could put in three acre lots and now he can't. Yeah, I like that. And if there's a subdivision right down the street, what's it called, Genesee or something? That is a buffer for them coming our way. So in a way that is, I get the point. To me, it seems like a win win for the city. But I'd understand the concerns. They are legitimate concerns about the police. The Jim Star Fire Station is right there. We don't maintain the roads and he wants to come in. With twenty three undeveloped acres. That's what we're kind of about.
Think about the condition that you have in South Fulton and Union City on the parkway. Where. Union City zoning is different from the city of South Fulton. South Fulton has residential developments. That go right up to their property line, you know, fifty foot setback or whatever, and Union City has no setback requirements on the warehouses. That are built right up to the property line, twenty five feet, probably people's homes. And, you know, the original commitment we made with the landowners in Chattahoochee Hills, we add buffer around that. We are protecting them more than they were before, and I. That to me has value too. Does. Any other thoughts on that? I mean, I'm again, I'm happy to continue if there are other points that we can. You know, when when he was here at the last meeting. I said basically the same thing I said today, which is, you know, he is accepting higher taxes to get higher value. We benefit from the higher taxes. He benefits from the higher value. And he sat there aggressively nodding that that's his thought too, you know, I get it. I don't mind creating value for somebody. It's great value for us too.
Well, and and like I said, I'm not, I, you know, I have no stake in his particular case, but in the abstract, I think it was worth coming back to and discussing more thoroughly.
Hundred percent agree. Hundred percent agree and want to make sure that you're feeling like you. Have you're full of that conversation. Are there other? Pieces that we haven't?
Not that, not that I'm aware of. Like I say, I. I can only barely feel what I don't know. Do you have anything to add, Mike?
No, I I I would just say I wouldn't discount this this buffer idea, right? Because you are creating a benefit for somebody, somebody who's already in the city, right? It it's it's true that there is a new edge and maybe you can create a benefit for that new edge at some point too, but. That doesn't discount the benefit that you're creating for those existing residents by adding buffer along their boundary.
Okay, fair enough.
All right. If that's it on that, then we'll move on to the next one, which is our caporal and tax rate, which again, we're doing the rollback rate. Robin, do you want to talk about that anymore?
Yeah, you have the agenda report. Should have it in front of you there with the. Dabulorom tax rate. We have to set the tax rate every year. This time of year, we get the digest from the county. And it comes in and we look at it when we say, is it a rollback or is it not a rollback? And this one was a rollback. And if we didn't roll back, we'd have to advertise the tax increase and have three public hearings and so forth, but. Then you guys kind of talked about it and said, hey, let's let's roll back to from nine to eight point two. So you've been talking about taxes and the previous agenda item and. So anybody that's in the city or decides to come in the city, the tax rate, if it's approved, will be at at eight point two instead of nine. So you guys have lowered the the middle rate since I've been here was ten point nine five eight when I started here, almost almost eleven mils. And you've gone from eleven to eight point two, and I think that's a that's something to be commended.
There are, there are two components of the growth of our tax base in the city, right? One of them is the increase of values. It's ironic that we're doing the rollback because you hear me in every meeting talking about the fact that we don't have enough money to pay our roads, pay our roads. But there are two components of growth in the city. One is increasing values. And that hits people that live here that are existing residents hard, right? The increase in values that happens because such an amazing place, we're doing so many good things to create good quality of life, increases values. And if you're a retired senior living on a fixed income, that is hard to stomach, right? And so. That's one component. The other component is just growth, right? The the development that pays for preservation in Chattahoochee Hills is happening too, and every new house pays new taxes. So even though we're rolling back our existing rate, which means that city taxes won't be going up because of seniors that have been living here for thirty years. We have enough new homes coming in and our taxes are still significantly higher. Our income is significantly higher this year than it was last, right? The growth that is paying for preservation is also adding to our tax base. And that's how I can personally mentally justify in our budgeting process during the rollback. Because everything we're trying to do from the beginning of the city is about not ruining the circumstances of the people that already live here as the development comes. And and I just wanted to to frame that because that's why I feel like we're able to do this.
That's absolutely correct. So, yeah, the public hearing is tonight and it's it's also adopted tonight, so. We'll, that'll be part of the council meeting and then we'll forward that to the county that the military has adopted. So I imagine that the vote will go forward because again, it's a rollback. It's a. So it's a good vote to make.
Any other thoughts, questions? Next one is twenty three dash oh four four, which is the rezoning of the Merrill property on Coffin Mill Road. Mike, you want to lead us into Ryan's presentation?
Okay, I'll just start of beginning. I think council has heard the the basic facts, the location, plenty, everyone's familiar with the property. Many members of council met with the design team to share their thoughts and the design team has returned with a revised plan. Along with a variance application for a reduction of the buffers that would normally be required along some of the roads. In the packet toward the bottom of the second place page, there's some discussion of of what those changes are. On both sides of Coffin Mill Road for about twenty two hundred feet, where the Coffin Mill Road would be, the character of Coffin Mill Road would become. Kind of an internal road in the in the village. I'll I'll let Ryan talk a little bit more about that, a reduction of the buffer. On the south side of the parkway, facing the parkway for five hundred feet on each side, that's basically an elimination of the of that buffer. And then again, a little bit of a reduction from that point to where the underpass is under the buffer where the trail would go. And then on the north side of the parkway, on the northeast quadrant. They have complete buffers along Coffin Mill Road, but a reduced buffer shown along the parkway for. Some distance, I think it's about. Two hundred and forty feet is what I've got. I'm sorry, six hundred feet, six hundred feet along there. And the other changes that we see in the plan include the addition of a small buffer on the east side. Where it is right next to the existing Bear Creek Hamlet, or also called, I think the new name is going to be the Ramble. For that hamlet, the addition of a trail on the west side linking the north and the south side of the parkway, the trail would run under the bridge as proposed. And then finally, the plan for phase one, and there's a separate sheet with a little more detail on that plan. Plan for phase one includes a larger footprint than it had on the previous version. Much of that is in that, again, the the. I told you about the reduced buffer on the on the north side, but reduced down to sixty feet, so larger footprint for that plan. And we have public hearings coming. On Thursday, the fifteenth and Planning Commission, and then, of course, back here in City Council, public hearing at your next meeting on September fifth, which is a Thursday, save for everybody. An unusual day because of Labor Day holiday. So those public hearings are coming up and the staff report will include analysis of the the zoning and and variance standards. As you would normally expect for them, so we can let Ryan.
Just a quick, just a quick reminder of the timeline here, you know, we've been working on this process with the developer. For a while with the the council, the previous to the last elections, it got to a point where the consensus been forward. Elections happen as sometimes happens, the consensus shifted a little bit. New council. Alignment met with the developer suggested changes. They made some changes responsive to those suggestions. Some of that's also stuff that came up in the workshops that we did with the zoning folks that we've been working on. So some of this is reflected with that. And as we've talked about, you know, because the process had been going on so long, we wanted to have a more robust. Reintroduction of it, right? So we're having a meeting now that would be the equivalent of the first read that we normally have. And then the public hearings that we normally have, if this is just a fresh project coming in. Again, just frame it and try and you're welcome to.
I'll just grab these right over here for exhibits. Thank you, council. Thanks for allowing us to. Present the changes and the updates to the Merrill Park Plan. It has been quite a process, interactive, as has been reviewed. By mayor and staff. We appreciate the time put into that to get to where we are today. What we are presenting today is that revised plan and what I put up in front is the land use plan that we're proposing for the site. This is more or less still within the theme of what was originally presented from a land use side. Are we are starting to compact it? And by what I mean by that is at one time in the south or excuse me, the northeast quadrant, we had a non red. A high concentration of non residential use that has since been swapped out for a single family. Detach is kind of what we're programming for, assuming to to be there, along with some attached product. So that that medical office that was originally proposed is now within that town center core incorporated, that non residential square footage is where we're. Seeing. So I do want you to know that the the program elements, as far as the specific uses that have been discussed, are still valid on this. We've just been moving the chess pieces around based on conversation and based on where the buffers are most needed and appropriate. To maintain the rural aspect of the city. The next one I will flip off and I'm just going to kind of go through them quickly because I know we've all. Talked about them many times, but I just want to do a a high level review and then answer any questions that may be. At the table. So Mike reviewed where the buffers that we're removing are requesting to be removed. For the overall vision of the plan and that is highly concentrated on the Cochran Mill Corridor. To create that village as discussed in the. Uh, to create that village um as discussed uh in the um. Small group meetings as well as multiple times uh at these official meetings as well. Um, where um. A s- a change from the last conversation that I know I was directly a part of. Um, is the reduction of some of the South Fulton Parkway buffer on the north side. And I would like to explain that a little, and I think what I'll do for that is to flip through that. Is to flip through that to that page uh one, which is the phase one plan, which is currently on the screen. Um, on the south side of what is to be phase one of the project. Is where that three hundred foot buffer uh would be required. You can see the additional uh. Linear square, not linear square feet, but linear feet from the then property line to the current edge of curb. Um, so it is a significant distance. Um, with this area, it um is um. Topographically challenging. There is a large hill at that southern portion of the site. Uh, and so knowing that grading um. To occur, we place the buildings as much as possible within the natural topo lines, using the buildings to terrace the topography as much as possible to reduce the need for. Significant uh hillside grading, but rather incorporate the structures within that. Um, so that's where you see a lot of the buildings uh in the lots taking the curvature of that topography to accommodate that. Um, now, as far as why do we need to reduce that three hundred feet to the sixty feet as being proposed? Well, it's to allow for the use of this land between these environmental features of the um. Of the strong topography, the creek, as well as the uh buffers that we need to uh maintain. Um, and then to get enough developable land in there to make a phase one plausible and pencil out. But the key reason here also to reduce that three hundred feet to sixty feet is really that pedestrian tunnel coming through underneath uh South Fulton Parkway. Um. You know, tunnels are are tricky things. They're not always the safest approach to um. To take a pedestrian from point A to B. Um, so by and having a three hundred foot buffer. After coming out of a tunnel. Just adds to that worry, honestly, with that, especially if it's on both sides. So we're trying to bring. Eyes on the park. I'm sure many of y'all have heard that before, different developments coming through. Uh, all planners learn about Jane pickups in in school and everything, and that's one of the things. It's eyes on the street, eyes on the park, right? Um, and so that's what we're trying to do is bring residents to this trail. The trail that's ultimately going to be part of the overall city of Chattahoochee, I think it's actually a county trail. Or was originally established as such and now a city. Um, but the little Bear Creek Trail. So we're trying to bring. Eyes on that trail as much as possible, and by reducing the three hundred foot buffer of pedestrians coming out of that tunnel tunnel to sixty feet. Will provides enough um. Leadway for that to occur more comfortably than if it was the strict three hundred foot buffer. But I will state as well, on top of that sixty feet, you can also see the um, the amount of distance outside of the property line to the edge of curb. Um, with that, it's, this is really a uh a hamlet here in this area tucked in behind the the buffers. And we really do see this as the design, setting the design theme and intent for the remainder of the development. So we very much see this same character being applied to the east side of Little Bear Creek in this quadrant of the development. And then also across the street in the southwest pod, now where we did um. You might have noticed that is not identified as being residential in the future. We labeled that as a potential campus. Um, and so we're penciling that out to be a hamlet style campus, if you will. Uh, taking inspiration from tech industry and such and not looking at larger buildings that are seven or not, excuse me, that are seventy to a hundred and twenty feet in depth. That would be more like server farm type old school nineteen eighties campus buildings. Don't think of that. We're looking at much smaller, compact building footprints to fit within this envelope because it is maintaining all of its buffers. So we've got to be very strategic in how that area lays out. So looking at forty foot depth. Buildings, and that allows for an open concept office and light to flood both sides of the building. Uh, tech industry loves that, and that is honestly one of the the points that um this project will be. Uh, sold to the uh potential buyers who come is is the tech industry and the. And the amenity that being in that rural type setting can can apply for that other pocket there. Next to uh the beautiful Cochran Mill Park. Now, on the south side of the parkway is where we are starting to actually remove the buffers and request that removal for the town center to interact. And this is along the Cochran Mill uh. Right away. There. Um, so. We're very pleased at the way that it is shaping up um from a high level concept to um. Allow this to happen. We've been obviously putting out the street framework and seeing how the uh various densities can be accommodated within these footprints. Yep. And so, and I'll I'll mention too, and the the southeast quad of this, which is your top right quad, if you're looking at the screen currently on the land use plan. You'll see where we we took the three hundred foot bumper again and narrowed it down, and that's for the exact same reason. But we also have another point for doing it at this location, a strategic point. And again, it's acknowledging the natural topography on site, which we're working very much um as much as we can. Uh, to work with, although if the development of the sides, it does get difficult. Um, so with that, this is a natural low point. There's it becomes a swell at this area and opens up quite nicely. Um, and so we would like to take advantage of that for stormwater management. It's a great natural spot. Uh, for that to occur and would avoid having to implement a large over engineered concrete site pond. Um, that um may be caused, uh, or some engineers may want to try to apply in a site like this. So. Using the natural swells as much as possible, you've you see where we have the fingers going all through the the development. We're acknowledging those. Those are may a lot of blue lines as well as some um wetlands that are all being preserved within their uh required buffers. Um, but we're also looking at some swells that don't have those state and federal buffers applied. For that exact reason, as I mentioned, for the stormwater management, looking to be as environmentally conscious as possible as we approach that. Overall, the density we're requesting uh is within the range of the the village district, so the minimum three units per acre to ten. Again, this is a long build out, so we're we are playing many models to see where we might land and to make sure that the framework being proposed today. Can accommodate it and is flexible. That is key with this development and this uh application is flexibility because of the build out range. Um, with that, I am going to pause uh because I feel like I may be talking a little too much. Uh, but please, if there's anything I didn't touch on or something you want me to revisit, uh, just let us know during Q and A. So.
I just do want to make one point. Uh, again, you know, villages are important in our idiom because they are the things that create funding. For the purchasing of development rights and external preservation. And again, based on the minimums here, you know, you're talking about at least uh well, well over a thousand acres worth of land outside. That would be uh having development rights purchased and protected permanently. It just a. One of the cost benefit analysis things for villages. Fire away with any questions, yet comments, anybody?
Well, just a question to start off, you you went through the whole thing, but left out the far uh. Northeast corner there, which looks like a giant housing development. Can you speak to that section?
Yeah, the northeast. So um we intend that to be a very similar style as the phase one that is just west of the creek. Uh, so while phase one is concentrated on more uh dense attached and semi attached product. Uh, the east side of the creek is looking at more single family detached uh. Units at that point with some attached mingled in appropriately. Uh, when laying out the framework for that, um. Honestly, one of the developments that I referenced for inspiration to start looking at. Lot sizes and that appropriate rural aspect is Palmetto Bluff uh in the Carolina. So. Um, that site um is um. Representative of some of the early phases of that development.
We're continuing. I don't know what Palmetto.
Oh, sure. Uh, it's. It's a very rural uh style uh new urbanist, new urbanist light type development. Um, it is, well, won't get in critic, uh, critiquing the development, but. It is a a very nice and welcoming community with uh a mix of housing product, which we would see proposed there as well. Uh, so the lot sizes are anywhere from fifty-five feet wide all the way in seventy to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty foot deep. Uh, so previously, we were proposing some much smaller type lots, but um at that point in our pro forma, in our pro forma. Uh, but for again, that density range, one of the requests was for us to look at more rural type detached housing. And so that was the development. That we identified and started programming to see where we would land.
How many, how many, what's the population? What's the? How does that factor in terms of the? The burden of traffic? And I mean, you've got it all running through. The phase one. On a single road. Along the buffer there and down into phase one, turning right to leave. Um, how 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 many people are going to live there? It's not just some farmettes.
Well, and and yeah, and that's to be determined, um, right? When we get to that phase that that in the scheme of the overall development, I don't know where exactly where that lands, but it is much further out. The town center will already be underway. By the time the east side of the creek is developed. But as far as the amount of. Uh, rooftops over there. In the two hundred range, probably uh a little more. Um, you could get on the east side of the creek, two to three hundred. And again, those right aways as well as inspiration from the Palmetto Bluff development are a little wider than normal as well, the two main that are crossing there. Um, and again, that's to um. To try to take some of the stormwater management uh uh relief off of the overall development where we would want to propose um some center medians with stormwater management needs. Um, but again, um. That is just uh conceptual ideas that we're throwing around at the moment. Uh, once. That development is or that piece of the development is ready to go to plat, we'll of course have all that vetted out.
Anybody else?
Can you speak a little bit more about the southern buffer there? The I'm I'm not sure I understand. Why that had to go right down to the parkway?
Well, some of the of the little node on the northeast corner. Yeah, I think he's talking about that buffer to the parkway.
The sixty foot?
Oh, the three hundred to sixty foot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that was really to, the main reason was to open up the corridor there, not open up the quarter, excuse me, open up lines of sight. From those residential units to the trail that's coming through the tunnel at that point. The tunnel is enters uh right, right, just before the buffer goes back to the full three hundred feet.
Have had, by the way, if you haven't seen that tunnel. To make a point. Well, what I'm saying is make sure somebody takes you out there to show you what he's talking about, because if you haven't seen it. It's hard to understand the rationale here. There's a sixteen by sixteen box culvert that goes under South Fulton Parkway to carry the trail system. And that's where it comes in.
But the argument is that.
It's a safety benefit.
We're going to collapse that benefit.
Uh, well, there, so one of the the points of our request is the safety aspect, reducing that three hundred foot. Um, in general, tunnels are are not. Safe. They're not friendly uh places. They they can invite or lure the idea of danger. And so we're trying to relieve that.
Line in Atlanta, though. I mean, if you're talking about safety, being able to see from a bunch of more development in the buffer seems like a kind of a weird argument given.
Yeah, the tunnel is very different than the belt line, though, I would say. Um, but we're also fighting with topography and environmental constraints as well with the little bear creek in the heavy topography. Uh, to be able to develop this portion of the site.
Is Cochran Mill a two lane road or is that a boulevard?
It's a two lane road.
As we mentioned, the boulevard in the past. One of the, one of the pictures we looked at, the picture of the boulevard. We're cocking it. So I'm just trying to clarify.
Right, we.
Clarify is that the southern path of this?
Yeah.
One of the uh.
Cause one of the pictures showed that.
One of the conditions that we're recommending, because you know, the the reality is a development like this over the first thirty years or four years that it takes to build out. Won't need the boulevard to start necessarily, but you want to keep the space aside for it. And so one of the conditions that we're recommending basically says that it can be too lame until. Doesn't need to be, but you can, you need to maintain the space to be able to make it the boulevard if you need that.
Right. And so, and we did remove those um. Potential improvements from within the public right aways, um, because we are. Going to step back and relate to the conditions from the city as well as from the D R I report. Uh, that will dictate how that boulevard is designed.
Is this intersection, it's depicted as a normal intersection? Is that's going to be a roundabout requirement?
Uh, we do not know how that's going to be played out.
What was the D R I?
D R I, did they request on there?
The D R I is done. Uh, the uh uh roundabout did appear in the D R I as as long, in addition to a number of roundabouts along the um, along Cochran Mill Road. Um, there were some options, actually, in in many of those cases, this or that options.
There's a D R I that the parkway one is supposed to be around.
Right, right, right.
That's important.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that needs to be changed in the show. Where is that?
The the intersection.
Parkway and Cochran Mill.
Oh, here, yeah, yes. Well, and it also is, the park rail be a. Two lane each way, right? It'll, it's. This depicts it as it currently lies.
Yeah, eventually, right?
So it'll, the part has to be remembered that the parkway is going to be two lanes going each way with the median, so that's a substantial. Uh, split. I mean, in in our earlier conversations, one of the things that. Was a sticking point on this was that it's in it's inability to overcome. The connectivity and drivability or walkability. I mean, all it's got is drivability except for a. A sixteen by sixteen foot box tunnel that needs safeties so that people can have their houses near it, I guess. But the. The, the. The idea that. That what we're looking at here is substantially different. I I guess I'm, I guess I'm having trouble understanding the. I mean, you've given up a little bit of the Atlantic Station on the Pike. Thing in phase one. But it's, but. It's kind of a, you know. Gave an inch and took a mile. Then to collapse this back into this giant. Bufferless thing at the, at in the, on the south side while still maintaining essentially. Most of what was there on the north side. Um. Can you speak a little bit more about the, about? You mentioned that the the. Northwestern quadrant. Uh, has been reconceived as a corporate campus kind of environment. But to what extent? To what extent does that cannot hold, given the, you know, the possible uses of that land? And then on, and then in phase one. I guess I'm still not entirely sure. Why it doesn't just stop at the buffer. I go, I I I mean, not to put too fine a point on it, but. Safety concern of being visible from the tunnel. I've just lived too many places to accept that as a, as a, as a valid reason for extending a development that far into a buffer.
They they talked about windows before for signs. But yeah, I agree. We, I mean, that that makes your buffers as wide as this room now, three hundred foot. That's, that's a lot of gobble.
So I guess I'm a little. I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly for the.
I know it was a rambling.
No, you're good. You're good. We're having open dialogue, so.
I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to understand. I'm sorry if I'm talking over anybody, but the. You know, we, we. From the initial conversations that I came. Uh, I, you know, I. I. I don't, uh, on the one hand, I do see. That on the south side. It presents something more like what one imagines a village would be. And you, you yourself spoke uh in a moment of frustration, very understandable frustration with me about. The the idea of driving through that and how that's, that's part of how that works, and I totally get that. I'm just still not seeing and also again, using your your words, what you've got is a hamlet. A corporate campus and a village, and those are three different things that are kind of bodged together that are here under the heading of. A village. And it's, it, and it, but it. It doesn't feel like it's changed that much, and I'm. And I'm, I'm, I, I guess I'm still hung up on some of the same points.
There's about more of the programming concerns and the, the land uses?
I think, I think what I'm hearing is it's more about the connectivity between the north side and the south side.
It's, it's a lot of that.
Maybe three projects is what I'm hearing.
Three projects that are called a village because. A set of land was purchased to do this that makes, I mean, how many hours have we spent on this? How much time has been spent trying to make this problem? Which is not our problem. Work. And, and understanding that we're all going to have to live with this and our children are going to have to live with this. And, and so what is it we're, you know, what are we prepared to accept on behalf of our city? And the, and. And, and, and so I guess maybe just part one of that question is. I still don't understand why the southern buffer on phase one has been shrunk down. To virtually nothing. I don't understand why. There's a. Essentially a standard suburban housing development behind it that has to drive through it. To Cochrane Mill Road. Was, I don't, what's the trip figure on that?
I guess what I would circle back to is the, just looking at the overall site and, and where we are. So of course we have the major parkway running through it and ended up with the four quads. We've known all along that pedestrian connectivity was going to be extremely difficult from the south side of the parkway to the north. With the, not only the buffers, but just the intensity of the current right away. Um, and then we add the current buffer regulations on top of that. We're already. Putting ourselves with the current. Village zoning code is already making us do essentially for the villages is what it, the code's making us do. From our variance request, we're trying to create one village that then appropriately transitions to less dense. Programming and design, especially on that north side as we continue to Cochrane Mill Park, the, the jewel of the city, which we are well aware of and appreciate. That was a lot of feedback and concern we got very early on when we were trying to open up. All four corridors there, excuse me, all four corners of the corridor there to create a much larger village. So we pared back the village significantly into a nice. Area right around Cochrane Mill Road, south of the parkway. To the north of the parkway then is like the next step outside of the village and it's a perfect walking experience to. Come from your office space in the village. Walk through the, the tunnel along Little Bear Creek to then get to your residential development that could then have some light commercial use. Which phase one is programmed with at the hub there, um, that community gathering space. That then has trailheads going into the park. From that point, you could also walk east and I wouldn't. Refer to the area east of, of the creek by any means as a, as a typical development. Typical developments are not acknowledging the topography to the extent that we are with the street framework. And considering all the natural swells, um, that are going through there. I know it's a lot to study, to look at the topography and, um, and analyze it from that point. But and also put a scale on these lots. These are much larger than your typical developer. Would propose here. We could get a heck of a lot more units there, uh, potentially. Even adding, uh, multifamily into that segment. But as you pointed out, we're limited by our, essentially our funnel and how we're bringing that density onto the public right away. We are setting up a framework that could potentially be extended should the need be if the density reaches that point. So there's a.
Can you? You forgive my ignorance, but I just didn't understand what you just said.
They're setting up a framework, a street network that could be extended. Two adjacent property lines should that become, uh, needed. And even an additional crossing of the creek should, once we have reviews with fire, uh, plan reviewers. And it be decided that additional connection is required. It's a highly costly, that is very high cost. To do a bridge over a creek, as I'm sure has been a conversation of many applicants prior to me. Which is why we're comfortably going in with one. Knowing that the future of the area east of the creek, that density is, is really unknown at that, this point. It could be very well that that one crossing is very much appropriate. But should a second one be warranted based on the rooftops on that current market? Then yeah, we could, there is an ability to bring another road down.
There's, there's a point too that you made earlier, Scott, that I think is actually a, a good way to look at this. The way that this has been reimagined, to your point, right? The thing that was originally shown as a village didn't make any sense as a village. What you've got now is a village on the south side of the parkway that really does meet the, the look and feel of a village. And a mixed use hamlet on the north side. Now, in our zoning. You can do hamlet stuff inside of a village context. But it, I think it is smart to look at it as a mixed use hamlet on the north side with restaurants and whatever, you know, the, the kind of daily use things, the coffee shop. That the people that live in that, this thing on the north side can go to, like any hamlet would have. And the village on the south side that creates the intensity that gives us development rights and all of that. Again, in our zoning, if you're doing to do that on one plot of land, you do it under village zoning. And you just do a hamlet intensity and part of it, because hamlet intensity can live inside of village zoning. So you're right. That is the way to look at it. And I think.
But then you use hamlet buffers.
So we're. Well, I mean, the buffers, the buffers are the same hamlets and villages. The relief for the buffer is a different issue and I'm not arguing with you on that. I'm just talking about the way that these things operate from a trip generation perspective and, you know, the way they, they operate fundamentally. The, the buffer issue is a different one and I just, I wasn't arguing with that.
Okay. That, and that, that, uh, go ahead, Ron.
No, I, I, to your point, the buffer issue where the tunnel is on the north side, that reduction of sixty. I, I heard what you said. I've heard what you said. It just doesn't make sense to me. You know, our city is different because the buffers drive up the parkway. You can see a city without buffers. And you know, I understand the walkability you need on Cochrane Mill. I would love to see a boulevard there from the get go. Drive down the parkway, we're different. Because of the strong buffers.
What, what's the?
And I think someone mentioned it earlier. You may have been, you, you, people have GPS now, so you don't rely on line of sight to see something to pull in there. And, you know, and someone else brought up. As we're doing this villages. This concept is really important to the city. I would, it would be so nice to have. Cause this, this should help the T D Rs. Some upfront purchase T D Rs, a certain percent upfront. That would make, it feels like we're giving, you're asking us to give and give. The city's taken on a lot of risk and as an elected official, it's hard. It's, it's hard to balance that out. It's really hard to balance that out.
No, that's said better than I could. The, uh, and also on the drawing, the South Fulton Parkway, the current, if I understand correctly, then the. When it becomes four lanes, the other lane will be to the north, right?
That's correct.
So it'll be blasting along right next to this thing.
No, that, that buffer is shown based on the, the right of way, right? So you've, right now you've got a lot more.
That's the parkway itself.
Right.
Then you got a median, then you're gonna have another parkway.
I get it, I get it.
And so I, I think of what's the, what's, if you want to know what this is going to look like, it's going to look like. On your way down the parkway into Atlanta, about four crossings down. I forget the name of it, but they're building an apartment building.
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry.
I know, I know, but for buffer, it is, that is about a sixty foot buffer there.
I think it would be really.
Usually it's identical.
For you to drop in. That future additional lane and the roundabout there, just so that people can see where you are in relation to that.
Sure, we can put that back in. Um, it's actually on previous submittals. It might be in the packet already. But yeah, and when that additional lane is, is put in, cause right now it's hundred and sixty-three feet, you'll still be a hundred feet of parkway. Turf that is cut and maintained and then sixty foot of wooded buffer, um, as proposed. Um, so.
Okay.
That's, but I mean, I think it's important for people to see that.
Yeah, it is important.
Cause that, that, it is, it's still a hundred fifty feet away from the. It's not.
What is the penalty for cutting a tree in the buffer?
In every city around us, there is no penalty. You can see, you can tell.
But we have a penalty.
I mean, we don't have a, we should.
A fine.
Fine, right?
Yeah.
We have a replant.
Replanting, yeah.
The, the teeth behind that are, you don't get permits for anything until you fix the problem you've made.
Because once you cut a big buff, a tree in the buffer, you can't put it back.
See Ronnie, that's my point, because my, my concern is, you know, I've, I've. I, I, I realize probably a lot of this will be sold off, so we may not even be doing business with. Mr. Merrill, whoever, we don't, at this point, we give permits, we don't know who we're doing business with. The last thing I want to do is destroy that much land. Especially if I don't, I, if I can't get some sort of box check on some financials. Need to make sure people can pull these off, you know, the, 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 the city you're standing in the last two, we couldn't, couldn't get, Foxall wasn't getting annexed, that was a no go. Movie studio, no go. You know, so right now this sounds like, um, you know, we're putting together a project. Basically three projects in the one, whatever you want to say, and, uh, which is fine. The topo is what it is, you know, that's. You know, I mean, you buy a piece of property, you deal with it. It's not my problem. You know, it's not money can't fix. I get it. And that's, that's where I'm at. I want to make sure the people we're doing business with. That we're just not having another useless conversation. We give somebody a permit who sits on it for ten years and I don't ever see a shovel in the ground. So how can you guarantee me that if you get that permit, we're gonna get going?
Well, that would, I guess, be up to the conditions of staff and, and as far as how long those permits are.
So you have no idea?
No, I mean, I can't, I can't tell you.
Are there any reasonable exigencies?
I do know.
Ask for a permit and they're not even ready to do business.
I'll pay for phase one, though. It is, uh, the applicant has to submit for L D P or perm, final plat within a year, right?
That's right, uh, concept plan, yeah, L D P.
So with this phase one, that's when you would see phase one happen.
Is that when the shovel's going in the ground, a year after the permit? Is that what I'm hearing?
The application, the final plat has to be submitted within a year.
My question is, as, as somebody, you've been working on this whole while, I get that and I'm not giving you a hard time saying there's, there's been fifty meetings on this, okay? Real simple question, you get the permit. Is this project financially backed enough to start digging when you get the permit? What else you gotta wait on before you get the permit?
Yeah, I can't speak to that and we'll have to.
That's, that's the answer, right?
We'll have to ask Mr. Harrison.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about phased approval? Versus, I mean, I mean, because we're being asked to approve an enormous. Thing. So what if we say, oh, we'll approve phase one and see how that goes and it, can you condition it in such a way that?
Part of our, but understand, right, that part of our thing here is how the D T C program works. You have to know what the overall picture is. Do that math. Now, you know, it takes phasing, it takes a long time, but the way the D T Cs work from the first thousand, money to buy T D Rs.
As the, as the builder, as, as, or the developer identified what, because there was a great mystery in all the public meetings as to where these would come from even.
Where, what will come from?
The T D Rs.
No, the D T C program means that we're getting money and, and the conservancy is buying T D Rs. That's the point.
Okay.
That's how the D T C program works. It's, it's better because you get them upfront. You don't get them after you've run out of the, the T D Rs on the property. That's, that's the benefit, the big benefit of this one is from the very first house you're buying T D Rs.
What's the rate set?
There, I mean, in our budget the last year, it was twenty thousand, the equivalent of twenty thousand a house, basically. It's a percentage that equates to that.
So T D Rs pegged at twenty thousand?
That is the way it's set in the budget right now, basically, yes. Yeah. Yeah. Again, happy to walk anybody through that process. I know it's complicated, but. And, and again, I mean.
Is that an argument against phased approval really? If we know it's a whole project. But it, but it can't.
But that's the point. How do you know what your math is if you don't know what the numerator and the denominator are?
But if the relationship is between, is, you know, house D T C.
No, but you, you calculate, that, that's the point. If you have a thousand acres, you have a thousand development rights, you have to do at least three X, right? So three thousand, but this is not, this is just some ground math. Now you know, they're applying for three thousand units. They have to do two thirds of development right per unit, because they already own a third. If they're doing five thousand, they have to do four fifths of it. You, you need to know what the numerator and denominator will figure out the.
So is there no way to do any kind of phasing to assure that what gets done is what's being said is what's being done?
So the, the, so the zoning itself would have to happen if you, you, we couldn't approve the, the zoning itself as a, a partial, right? Cause they're just a little over the minimum threshold. Um, you'd have to get at least the five hundred acres to meet the, the zoning requirement in the zoning. You could potentially condition additional council approval at certain steps. The question is then for the applicant, what does he know he has from council, right? You could say he's got the zoning. I mean, I, I think that you would only want to approve the zoning with a certain expectation as applied, right? He said how many units, two thousand units, we have that math, we would need to go forward based on a certain assumption of the map. If you needed to add some council approval in some phase for some aspect of it. That could be considered, I guess. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
Do that anyway, if there's major changes to the plan.
Sure, changes to the plan, right?
I mean, that, that happens anyway. We're looking at a plan. We know about what the, the expectation is. Ryan's made the point, right? Markets change. If they need to change because the market has changed, the plan requires a change, that comes back to us anyway.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, no, no.
Like how many variables we don't know how to do.
I get it. I'm just trying to explain, that's all.
Right, right. So it will be a phased project, certainly. They've identified phases. Those identified phases might not be the order things happen because it will be determined by the market. You get a buyer who wants this, not that. That was phase two. Now phase five becomes phase two or a piece of it, just because that's what's available. So they're not locked in with the phases they identified. This is sort of conceptual. And that will be approved. So their preliminary plat, which they would need to get a preliminary plat within a year, as you heard, will almost assuredly not cover the whole. Thing. It'll probably just be phase one, um, that identified phase one on the near side of the creek, northeast of the, the, uh, Cochrane Mill Road and, and the parkway. Whether phase two is, will come in for separate approval, the preliminary plat, which will have to be reviewed by planning commission. They have preliminary plat approval, so they'll review it against the approved concept plan, which is what we have. And so it will be in for those approvals before anything happens. If it doesn't sufficiently match what happened. Upstream, right, concept plan, um, then it would have to come back to, to city council for. A new, a revised concept plan approval. Same when the development plans come in, if they don't sufficiently match the preliminary plat. Send it back for revised preliminary plat, potentially revised, um, concept plan. If they're looking to, if they're seeking to do something that's, that's too different. We do have something that's pretty conceptual, right? There are a lot of things you can do that would match, um, what's in the, in the conceptual plaque. But they have identified mixed use areas, um, campusy areas, those sorts of things, and, and we would stick with that. In that yellow part across the creek in the northeast. That you characterize as a conventional, um, uh, suburban subdivision. Yeah, we don't have lot sizes, right, for that. That's not, um, identified, it's not conditioned, it's not. An identified part of the plan, so we don't know what those lot sizes will be. And so a lot of things could come in that you could say, yes, that matches conceptually, right? And so if you're looking for control of those sorts of things, we would need the additional detail to then say yes or no, this, this. If you want us to be able to say no to certain things, we need to know what those things are in order to have something.
That a lot of this stuff is contained in our zoning, right? So they can't come in and say, all of a sudden, I'm going to do an eighty foot wide street here because our zoning doesn't allow it anyway. Right? I mean, it's, it's not, it's not as all open as that makes it sound. Our zoning is not all open that way.
That's correct. We do have samples.
Do a traditional suburban sprawling subdivision inside of our zone, period. 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 Sorry.
But you can do it in a village or a hamlet?
No, you can't. I mean, traditional sprawl, like around us, our zoning doesn't allow for that. Really doesn't. It's a preserve. I don't know, it's, it's not that. It's, it's to get the densities on the acreage. You can't, you can't do it in a typical one house per acre thing. You can have a couple lots outside. But you cannot do a typical sprawling, pick up all the land and get to the densities that were required. That you're paying for with transfer fees on every sale. Right? Like it, it's, it's built to not allow that. It, it would take probably longer than this audience has for you and I to have that conversation.
I'm in my head, I'm in my aunt's neighborhood in Roswell off Sandy Plains, looking at exactly the same layout. So yeah, no, um. I, maybe we return to the buffer. Can you re-explain the buffer? Since that's a concrete thing, I'm in the abstract world, but to return to the concrete.
The one in phase.
The southern buffer of phase.
Sandy Plains does not have a mechanism to preserve seventy percent of the land, and that's it, that is the biggest difference. But go on, the buffer.
Look up Jefferson Township, go ahead.
Um, so, I mean, I'll restate our, our points that are in the, the variance application, which are for the, the safety of the pedestrian trails, bringing more house rooftops, front doors, running onto that as much as possible, by reducing the buffer, it allows us to extend down there to do that. Um, also, the, the constraints of the topography, um, and then, um, well, I guess it was those, those two main things, I feel like I've said it.
What is, I guess, I guess, what is the constraint of the topography that stops you from, like, there's a big old parking lot right there?
Well, it's adding up the environmental aspects within this buildable envelope, so what is the buildable envelope of this area west of the creek and east of Cochran Mill Road? When we know we want to maintain and agree with council and those public input, that Cochran Mill, especially at this point, needs the buffer as we enter the park. Uh, wanna, we wanna respect that, we get that. Um, but on the Parkway, that's where we see opportunity to reduce that, to provide uh, the density needed in this phase one. Um, and working with the topography, we're limited on that product type, we can't do a, a multifamily or a village type here um, development, so that's why we're going through more Hamlet-style products in this area, which we need more land area to accommodate that.
So if I, if I'm hearing you right, sorry Scott, but, um, you, you basically want to take out the majority of that buffer, so we can build on it, because some of the rest of it's not buildable.
Yeah, there's a lot of environmental concerns, right?
Yeah, that, that, now we go back to topography, is that?
I think, you guys can agree with that or not?
So, I mean, the question is, do we, do we want our buffer, do we not? I mean, I guess, I can leave it that.
And also, uh, that word needed is, means needed to make the money we want to make, as opposed to needed to meet our zoning, right?
Well, needed to make the products, yeah, make that program.
So just, I just want everybody to understand, because we're talking about, I mean, what you're saying is, in order to make the money we need to make, given the fit, the land we bought, we need you to collapse the buffers for us, that's, that's what you're saying.
Well, I'll state, when the land was purchased, this buffer requirement was not in place.
Well, and, but, but that doesn't matter.
And it was changed during our application process.
And you had every, every opportunity to have a say on that, so that would have, I mean.
Hmm, no.
There's a.
Oh, does that mean that I can treat my property differently, because it was there before? No, so, I mean, I don't understand that argument. So I'm, I'm just, I just want people to hear what we're talking about here. And so that word needed means we need to get a certain amount of money out of this, so you need to reduce the buffers.
And, and that's.
For the next meeting, if you would, uh, let's look at the timing of changes to the zoning, so that Rick can comment on that, like, I'm not.
Does that suggest that they have a legal right to building?
I'm not sure, I mean, if, if something changes after somebody's applied for something, then they may, but I'm not sure that's actually happening in this case, and I would like an opinion, that's all I'm saying. I don't know the answer to the question. Generally, if I know the answer to the question, I will tell you, but I don't know the answer to this question. I, I don't think so either, but we can, we can check that, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, the zoning didn't change in midstream after the application, um, it may have after they purchased, I'd have to look into it.
I have a quick question, um. Thank you for the information, appreciate it, um, was there in your discussions about the tunnel, and then the, when you programmed that, that piece out there by the park, um, was there, is there any other way to, to get that density without having to decrease the buffer at all, in any way that you would need, uh, was there a plan B? That maybe was discussed or anything?
Essentially, we're at the point of the rooftops there, that if it goes any higher, a structural deck would be required. And that's, that's just not feasible at that location.
To be clear, on, uh, a variance request like this, Rick, Mike, if some portion of it is acceptable to council, some portion is not, you could say that we accept this with the exception of this one piece of it, or whatever, right, I think that's a, that's a thing, just want the council to know what the possibilities are.
It's, as, as written is tied to the plan, a buffer as shown in the plan, we could have a revised plan, yeah.
Just, just, again, to clarify for council.
You, you know, I don't, I don't know how to explain that to people, they get their house and you know, twenty acres, and that's all they can do, they can't even give their kid five acres to build on. So I can't explain to them why we would bulldoze a buffer to allow housing, and we won't even allow our current residents those options, so I'm just letting the council, uh, I have no interest in moving that level. People's problems when they buy their property is, is not up to us to fix. God knows, I, I should be paid for a lot of time, I've sat around, listened to this, you guys have a copy of that UDI? It's very explainable. It really is, and the citizens in this town have been through enough without another project that becomes a nightmare, and may or may not get done, and may half of it may get sold, we don't even know who we're gonna be doing business with. And I'm not giving you a hard time, I'm just saying, it's a sticky subject, that's why I mentioned earlier, we've had two or three things go south, uh, for all the wrong reasons, really, a lot of, and unfortunately, until things are more straightforward, we're trying to get out of this frame of mind, but that's just where we're at. Sorry. That's where I'm at, I don't speak for us, these guys.
Just, before we, before we stick a fork in this one, because look, you know, the other thing, I, I would ask council to do, if there are things that they're not sure, you know, Ryan explained, and they're not understanding whatever, reach out. You've got access to these folks to make sure you understand exactly what they're asking for, so that you can have your opinion based on that fact. Uh, before we move on, Ruby, any other thoughts from you?
No, I'm just sitting here listening, and I'm like, um, Richie was saying, just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by everybody.
Uh, Robbie, any last thoughts on this?
Thank you.
Thank God.
Well, yeah, just to close, I mean, you're a hell of a designer to deal with the gyrations in this project, and I appreciate, I appreciate your talent in, in trying to overcome the exigencies of the problem that was handed to you as it was handed to us, so, it's not like I just don't need to feel like I'm picking on you here, but, uh, so, I have to thank you, and I appreciate you standing up for all these answers.
And I'm glad we could have that open dialogue.
No, I was just gonna say, I thought you explained everything very clearly, yeah, made it very simple to understand, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Uh, wait, oh, Neil, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, after everybody had their opportunity for a last word here.
No, I think what, what we're discussing is a large project, so I'm not, I'm not surprised we have questions, and then thanks for redoing this, I think that, um, on the, what Richie's talking about with the financial piece, personally, I'm not sure really how, that, that's a whole nother animal, because I think in the financial world, we don't, we're looking at as a project, in my mind, and how it's brought to us, what happens with how someone gets their financing? I'm not sure, I, I just, that's just something.
It's not how real development works in the real world, but that's just what it is.
Well, some cities, if you do a little research, they actually put a couple placeholders in place, they actually check on some of that stuff, because if you're gonna do a hundred million dollar project, you're gonna want some assurances, so. That's not unheard of, that's unheard of here, well, I wish we'd done it for the movie studio, find out if the man's broke, guy's broke after two and a half years, really, that's all. Anything can be done, I've been reminded that by that, that we're the voting party, so we want to hear that we could do that.
Good job, Susan.
Anything else on that? Thanks, Ryan.
All right, thanks, guys.
Uh, next up are a couple of, uh, new business items, uh, including one that we added, twenty-four dash oh four two, which is the Coco covered, Coco's covered agreement, who's talking about that?
Uh, this is a, our annual agreement with Coco's, um. I just want to say, I, I don't mind renewing the Coco's agreement, because it doesn't cost the city anything unless we actually call them to come out and get the dog. But with animal control in their new billing, um, we've changed our processes, animal control no longer charges us per call like they used to. It's a flat rate based on the population and the size. And it's significant.
Yeah.
So.
Use the heck out of it.
So, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, so call in, call animal control as much you want. Um, so anyway, but, um, yeah. The people, uh, citizens can still call and, and ask for a Chattahoochee Hills officer, will still come out, and, you know, if the dog's friendly, bring him to the, excuse me, bring him to the kennel, just so animal control can come, pick him up from one location and keep on going, you know, and whatnot, and then if that doesn't work out, we'll have a backup for, for Coco's, again, just having the agreement, it doesn't cost the city anything. But if, you know, animal control is full, or they, you know, can't get to the dog, we have a backup, you know.
Has that slowed down any, the dog dropping, or is it still?
It comes in waves, we'll go, we'll go and not have a single dog call for like two weeks, and then we'll get like four in a day. You know, and then we won't have anything.
And I heard a lot of that, I saw a few strays go to my yard, desert, I just let them keep.
Yeah, it just, it comes and goes in waves.
Didn't bother me.
I li, I like that option to the way the process has been working, I mean, it's really a relief valve for citizens, thinking, sitting on the side of the road, waiting on animal control, they will be there for hours, maybe a day. So the fact that we can, our police will actually respond and relieve the citizens of that burden when they're trying to help. Is great, so I like that, thanks.
Yep.
Bill, some thoughts about that? I mean, again, it doesn't cost us anything, it's just a, a benefit.
Well, just an appreciation of the city's responsiveness around the issue is fantastic.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, Ken.
I'm, I'm just gonna stay up for the next one.
Sorry.
Okay, so the next one is actually a two-part, uh, agreement with the, um, Fulton County School Police, um. When I was trying to get the school zone cameras up and running, I got a call from the chief of police from the schools, uh, from the Fulton County Schools, saying that the superintendent wouldn't sign off unless we had an agreement with them, with the Fulton County School Police, just stating that we are responsible, the city is responsible for the school zone cameras. Said, okay. And we also have a, have to have an agreement with them, what they refer to as their Uvalde clause, in case there is a active shooter or an emergency at the school, that we are the responding agency, and they will respond as a backup agency, that they won't be the primary agency. And so we have to have that memora, memorandum of understanding to do that legally, so that's where this is coming from.
Any questions of anybody on that?
Can you explain that a little bit?
Sounds like you got your marching orders here, kid.
I'm sorry?
Can you explain that Uvalde thing a little bit for me?
Because of what happened in Uvalde, Texas with the, the sheriff's office, the school, school police said the sheriff's office was gonna handle it, and the sheriff's office said the school police had to handle it, and so there was a.
So they sat outside.
So they sat outside while, while an active shooter was in killing kids.
Who's responsible now?
Whoever gets there first. Which would be us.
Which is gonna be you anyway.
Yeah.
This is just clarifying who's in charge.
I can't, I can't tell you, but, I mean.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Yeah. So.
I, I, yeah, I mean, as, as we're talking about this lightly. Thank you.
Hmm.
For that mantle that you wear there. Uh, any questions about that? Thanks, guys, um, thank you, Ken. Next up is the Brickworks, uh, donation that is in the budget that we have to then authorize.
Yeah, here's what, uh, Mayor Council, last year, you gave Brickworks twenty thousand dollars. Um, this will year ended June thirtieth, they were unable to spend that twenty thousand dollars. So that ten thousand, the additional ten thousand dollars went into our general fund, um, they need some other work done over there. Uh, we have financial policies, they have to get three quotes, anything over twenty-five hundred dollars, three written quotes, if it's over seventy-five hundred dollars, and anything over fifteen thousand, you know, gotta be approved by council. They don't have those same policies, so what I like to do is say, hey, you got ten thousand dollars left, here you go, is a donation from the mayor and council. We don't have to worry about, Dana and I, we don't have to worry about going through all the quotes and doing purchase requisition forms and all that kind of stuff, here's ten thousand dollars, finish your project. That's what this is.
Cool.
Clean. Clean and simple.
Again, Brickworks is one of our public services through the library, and they are awesome.
So, Robert, just have a question. And this is for like the air conditioner jets?
Yes, yeah, they weren't able to finish, they got the electrical work done, uh, that was a lot more expensive than they anticipated, because you have to get the electrical up and running, so they'll handle the air conditioning unit, so now that's what they want to do, was move forward with the air conditioning unit. And if we were to do that, of course, we'd have to get three quotes from, they can use whoever they want.
Right, I was just thinking, because they's part of the building, um, they have to get their own, um, air condition, they're not just part of the building itself.
Yeah, just. Yeah, they have a, we have a memorandum of understanding with them, so part of the facility maintenance is on them, and, and part of it is on us, so, things like, you know, the, the septic tank or something like that, that would be on us, but other, uh, capital improvements that they want to do is, is on them, so. And then the library's a little bit different, because the library's kind of a city department, so that's treated a little bit differently, but Brickworks also funds the library. So there's a.
Part, part of the irony here is they want to help us with the air conditioning too, right, so like, we're donating through ourselves kind of there.
Right, we're taking ourselves out of the financial equation, if you will.
Good question. Uh, all right, any other questions on that? If not, uh, next is a, uh, uh, land use application, concept plan application, Mike.
Yes, this is the, uh, two hundred and two acres that was recently rezoned, um, into Serenby, it was zoned by council in June, just a couple months ago. Um, uh, we received a concept plan, um, we received a concurrent preliminary plat application, um, both went to the planning commission, uh, last month, and, um, the preliminary plat was, uh, approved conditional on the city council's approval of the concept plan, the two plans match, uh, each other, and so, so the, the code allows, uh, specifically allows for that. Um, the plan shows, uh, thirty-one residential lots, um, each about an acre, surrounded by, um, some, several acres of open space, they vary. Um, three of those thirty-one lots are identified by the applicant as farm lots. Um, but there would be, uh, thirty-one residences and, um, a, a bunch of separate individual open space parcels that would then be sold to, uh, the same owner of the developable lot, um, in which they are, uh, situated. The, uh, the remaining development rights would be applied elsewhere in the hamlet, it gives, um, it would give them about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy, uh, two remaining development rights that could be applied elsewhere in the hamlet. Of course, that's not really a part of this application, this is only about the con, the configuration of the two hundred acres, um, in, in question. The, uh, plan meets the cluster requirements that we have in the zoning, uh, meets a number of other, um, other tests as far as uses and, and, uh, and those sorts of things. Um, it is very loosely developed, not what we typically think of as hamlet, not what we describe in the con, the comprehensive plan as hamlet. Um, but the UDC is designed to enact a comprehensive plan, and it meets the, the, uh, the, the language that's in there. Um, the commanding, planning commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the concept plan with the following conditions. Uh, property must follow the demarcation requirement found in UDC section five dash three dot I. The method of demarcation must be shown in the site plan of any building permit, that demarcation is just supposed to, um, make it clear on the ground where the developable lot ends, and the open space lot is not to be developed, except for agricultural uses, um, uh, begins. Um, uh, the open space conservation easement must be recorded prior to the issuance of the first building permit on the buildable lot. Um, uh, we have a similar requirement on the adjacent F lots, uh, for, um, the, uh, the conservation easements, uh, before it's three O. Um, we went through some process to get a model conservation easement for those lots, so we have that model, so that should be able to be, um, uh, that should be able to happen pretty quickly. Um, third, the main trail shown on the north side of the property must be constructed by the first certificate of occupancy issued on the property. Um, if you look at the map, I'm not sure, um, uh, here's the. Um, uh, here's the map, if you look at the little uh eight one gone down in the corner, this is north of that side, so you see. A trail shown um up here, crossing the property, that's kind of a, a segment of a regional trail, connects into Serenby and then to the west to. Uh, to Sardis Road and um, and uh hopefully beyond. Um, and then finally, um, there was some concern in the planning commission about the term tightly clustered that exists in the concept, in the um comprehensive plan. In the description of Hamlets and um, uh, the uh, the condition is, city council should address the meeting and application of the term tightly clustered. Um, they felt that it um, uh, it was difficult to uh, to make a decision on um, on whether that was met, as I indicated. The UDC is intended to enact what we find in the comp plan, we do have clustering requirements and they do meet those requirements, although it. Feels like it's not what somebody's idea tightly clustered really would be, so that's why, that's why that uh, uh, that condition was added by the planning commission.
Can you say a little more about tightly clustered in this context?
Uh, well, that's, that's an interesting question, um, um, and that the planning commission attempted to uh, to put it in the uh, in the city councils, it's a policy question uh for city council, the policymaking body. Um, what I think of as tightly clustered is what we find in most of Serenby, right, I think most of Serenby is tightly clustered. Uh, the code, the, the UDC um intended to um, uh enact that has a clustering requirement that only allow, only requires groups of three lots. Um, in clusters and again, they've achieved that in what they've submitted, they have three or more lots clustered together, each, each of the lots are. Touching at least two other, two of the lots or in groups, right, they can be lined up. Um, um, and so in that way, they meet that clustering requirement, um. Uh, uh, if you had asked me to draw a picture of tightly clustered, this is not a picture of what I would have driven, drawn, um, however, it does meet with the UDC.
Is, can you say anything else about, you know, we have what the. I didn't attend, unfortunately, the zoning meeting where that was brought up and they threw it to us. For obvious reasons, but they can, what was the discussion, what is, or is it just that definitional matter?
About the, the clustering, yeah, I think, I think they were looking for more guidance from city council, that's why they added that, that condition. Um, I think the, probably the reason for the approval was because they met the requirement in the, in the UDC. Um, I actually can't answer for all their decision-making, um, ne- necessarily, I, I can't, I can't speak for them, but, but I think that that was. Um, you know, they founded that the actual regulations written to control these things were, were met.
And we do have some clarifying recommendations coming from Shannon and Robert.
That's right, that's right, it was a subject, you know, we have an ongoing, I know you all are well aware, ongoing um revisions to the unified development code and this particular issue. The um perceived insufficiency of the clustering language in the UDC is one of the things that uh, that's, that's being treated in that uh, in that forthcoming update.
Okay, it's uh. Maybe it's, I don't know, am I allowed to talk about something that's not this? Right now?
Wait, wait, I'll save it, I'll ask you other, other stuff.
Everybody since, okay.
This is similar to what was approved for the F lots also, which are adjacent and the, the road, I didn't mention the road that goes through this, connects to the, the F lots, which you may remember. Um, kind of an L shaped uh thing, each of those lots, um, that's where I mentioned the conservation easement, how that's treated, each of those is a uh developable lot in the middle of, of open space. Um, and again, the open, they can have agricultural choose, you could put a barn on it, um, but for the most part, it's going to be um barely natural um conditions. Um, so this is similar to something that has been approved before.
That, that open space is subject to the same uh. The same standards that apply to, I mean, you could put a barn on it, you could also put a. Pole barn with a roof and a fire thing and a, like, so any number of agricultural buildings, just not.
That's right.
Any other.
That's right, that's right, agricultural, you couldn't put a swimming pool, um, you, you couldn't put a, you know, pool accessory dwelling, those sorts of things wouldn't be allowed, those have to be. Make, those have to be within the developable acre.
Okay.
If I drive down Sardus Road, what are the buffers in place for this?
Buffers are in place, the uh, the applicant would like to be able to open the buffers for those farm lots and um. Uh, we actually have a uh, one of the pending changes is uh to specifically, we used to have what we called a rural, rural character exception to the buffers. Um, where if it meets what the requirements are for the rural district, um, then you can put the buffer behind it. Um, that language is not in the current version of the zoning, we have um, uh, in the little language that you'll be seeing, a um, a proposal for something very similar, so if it's something that could be allowed. In the rural district, um, it can be visible, um, but the rest of the development can't be visible, so. Little bit of flexibility about how that's achieved, it would be the um, the applicants, um, the owners would be on the applicant to show how you're gonna be able to see this and not see that. Um, but uh, but that's it, seem appropriate, uh, because it still meets the character that we don't mind being outside the, the buffer.
And that's part of this?
Uh, it, so the buffer, the buffer is shown in this plan, so they would have to uh come back to, for, for, for a change to the buffer.
Okay, good.
Anybody else have any questions about this? All right, uh, the next one is the one that we added, which is the one about the mowers, Daryl, is that you wanna talk about that? For. For now, for, for people that are walking in, we are running a little late with the work session, uh, we're gonna end that here in just a couple of minutes. Take a five-minute bio break probably before we start the actual council meeting, um. Yeah, but, but walk us through this.
Six thirty.
Yes, sir, these are for the purchase of the uh two lawnmowers that y'all approved, uh, when we went through the uh budget process this year. Uh, there's of course the price, we got discount go bought to it one time, so it's above our spending, uh. Can't spend that money without y'all's approval, we just need your approval for that. It's something that's already been budgeted, it's less than what we budgeted, what we thought it was gonna be.
It's a ZTR.
Um, they're, you know, uh, metal, they're M models, the top model, commercial.
You, you got a picture of that mower?
I can get you one.
All right.
Thank you.
Picture that mower.
Um, real quick, uh. Anybody on the council, I know Scott has something in voicemails.
And I have one thing, um, Fair Creek Nature Center, um, last year in November, they had um, asked us to um, give us, give them a grant. Cause we helped them out with some of the things, last year we were not able to give them that grant, so they are coming back this year. Um, Chip is here, Chip, you wanna come, could you come and just kinda explain some of the things that, um, that y'all are working on? And I know that um. Robert said maybe we could put it, had put it in this budget, so maybe you can share that.
If you can hear me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you wanna get people's attention, whisper.
We've got uh. Right now, there's five hundred thousand. Uh, cap, so that's uh, total renovation of the classroom downstairs. We've got new cases of animals just about now. Got help building for storage so we can expand, use more space in the center downstairs. We're, the main thing is wanna extend that porch. Have all y'all been there? We're gonna extend the porch, that'll give us outdoor classroom space. So our main objective is to bring the kids in there. To educate them on outdoor. And the advantage of learning and understanding about nature. So right now, we've got a project manager, Richard Harper, who I've known all my life. He stepped in as a retired builder and he took that from me in Norma. He's put a framework around there, very organized framework. So where we think we can spend that money by the end of the year. Next year is an unknown, we're trying to put another body on. So we can teach more, so we can go to the classrooms, serve more Fulton County right now, which were underserved. In, in a nutshell, that's it, I don't wanna take any more time, running behind, any questions?
So I know that's not in the budget right now, I know we also have some administrative contingencies, so we might be able to pull that from some industry funds. We'll, we'll, we'll talk a little more about specifically what that is and bring it into another council meeting. Um, again, council, if you have any input on that now, but. We'll, we'll try to put that together first and then come and talk about with detail.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, Chip.
Anything, anything for me, Rich?
No, I'm good.
Scott, you had a, a question that came up?
Yeah, just on the, the mention there of the um TSW coming back with. The zoning revisions and so on and their, their. Setting up meetings with council members and so on.
That's not TSW.
Not TSW, who might.
Shannon and Robert.
Right, right, my apologies, the uh. But there's, they're, they're. Coming back and setting up individual meetings with city council members. And I feel like that's just asking for a game of telephone, and so I was gonna ask if we could have a motion in the interest of. You know, transparency and clarity to just do it like a workshop, they can present to all of us, we can all. Just have our say and. Have, then everybody's on the same page instead of all this.
We will have that workshop too.
But why not have it when they present their friends the same thing to everyone?
Yeah, I mean, that's fair, it's, it's mainly tied, and it's the way we've always done this, because conversations take a lot of time.
Yeah, they, they take a lot of time, but let's do it together instead of doing it one by one by one, so.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of that, I, I, I couldn't fill either one of her dates.
I don't know how to make a motion.
Well, I mean, no, we can set up that workshop. I will set up that workshop, again, anybody here is welcome to reach out to anybody, staff, expert, whatever, to get an education on any subject, right? Please do.
Education.
And. I'll make sure that we set up time that we can all talk together.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Uh, in fact, anything else for you?
No.
All right, so this meeting has run long, I've got a couple of points I wanna bring up before we break from the work session. Uh, just a point of order from Rick and Diana, if we wanted to start the next work session an hour early, what do we need to do to make that happen between now and then? Uh, just vote on it tonight. Vote on it tonight, okay, so I'm gonna suggest that we do that next time because we got a couple of these, you know, ongoing. Issues, uh, whether this is that or whether we set up a separate conversation where we all get together for that, that's, we'll figure that out, I'll talk to them about time. Uh, but, but let's plan on that, so hopefully remember that. A couple of things I just wanna put out in front of people, um. There has been the start of a conversation, I've mentioned this before, the, the people that are looking at purchasing the Buchard property. Have reached out, we've had some conversations about how the zoning works and what is allowed, isn't allowed on that property and all of that, so that conversation is ongoing. Uh, there has been apparently a, a decision made in advance of that, that there's a timeline now on how law enforcement events are going, so that. That works, you know, out too. And I just wanted to make sure people know that, you know, I'm application yet, we don't have. Details, but they have reached out, there is some conversation going on, and at some point, I expect that we'll be seeing a plan. And that plan from everything they're saying will be responsive to our zoning. And the first step in all of those, as always, is once we get an actual plan or an actual application or indication that we're getting one. Is the start of the DRI process, right, because the DRI process with uh credit and ARC. Then looks at traffic impacts, feeds that back to us, GDOT, everybody participates in that program. So that if we need conditions around traffic impacts, you know what those look like. And typically you do that before the real application comes in because you need to build that into the application, right? And, and again, just wanting to manage expectations about where we are in that process and. You know, my, my, my guess is within the next couple of months, we'll probably be seeing that first, whatever that is. And uh, then the, the DRI process happens, which generally takes a few months on its own, and then we'll have an application. End of the year, beginning of next year, whatever, something, something like that. I have a question for the group, uh, because uh, the guy who did most of the work on this reached out to me, just asked me, whatever happened with the Rito Crossroads conversation? We had done a lot of work, uh, previous council on the idea of a, a kind of uh. Crossroads Hamlet, which is something that exists in the zoning, I, I know that there's some different feelings about how that might uh happen. And to the point of, you know, having these conversations again, should we set up a separate workshop with him to come in and once again present that and give feedback on that? To see if it's something we wanna look at, how we wanna look at it. You know, a- again, I, I know you've got strong opinions on this, but I'm also curious about the rest of it.
Well, we were never really, since we've been on council, we haven't been briefed or updated on that, so maybe an update would be helpful.
Yeah, I would love for District Three residents to have an opportunity to hear directly from them about this thing because uh. It, it was really taken poorly and handled poorly the last time.
I'll, I'll set that up, uh, again, that may be, I mean, we got a lot going on, so maybe not the next month. Uh, there has been some progress, uh, Trust for Public Land, who you know is doing the work on the Riverside Park, South Side of Town, uh, the pavilions and all that kind of stuff. There's been an ongoing conversation with them about several other parts of land that are contiguous to our parks, and I'm not gonna talk too specifically about that because. Because I'm free by land, you don't wanna talk too specifically about that, but there is a, a piece of land that is. Uh, close to one of our parks, connected one of our parks, that they have said that they are interested in helping the city pursue a GOSIP grant to purchase and add to the park. And again, just wanna let people know that we're moving forward with that process, there's some legal paperwork with uh. Uh, TPL, we could have to do to make that happen, that may come in on the next agenda, uh, so that they can move that forward and again, it would be a, a pretty significant expansion to one of the parks. You know, wildland, not, not anything that we would necessarily be doing anything with. But, but again, our plan is good, generally speaking, if to add into it. Is generally for the good, and so that's something that's moving on. I had a presentation and probably would have taken about a half an hour on. The relative benefits of different development styles, there, there's a lot that has gone into our zoning that is thoughtful about. You know, the, the thirty percent and the seventy percent is the fundamental thing, we're saving seventy percent of the land from development, only developing thirty percent, thirty percent pays to not develop the other. But we also have a lot in our zoning, it's about making sure that we're creating uh good design and good value on the thirty percent that develops. And uh, I was just at a conference uh invitation only thing where we were working on city budgeting for. Better development topologies and a friend of mine who does these kind of relative development studies, um. Did one for uh Fayette County where Trillith is, and when he did that, he expanded their, their search horizon to include Chattahoochee Hills. And so I've got some really cool data that talks about how that works at Chattahoochee Hills, but again, we're out of time, so I will move that to next month, that's why I wanna start early next month, we've got, you know, a. Oh, on a, on a development, we're probably, I'm talking about that, I, I do wanna make this presentation. So with that, I'm gonna say that we're done with our work session for a moment. Uh, I need a personal, so we're gonna take a five-minute break and then start with our council meeting.